Ready when you are.
I've got four fifty-nine, I'm sure it's coming up on, I got four fifty-nine, I'm sure it's coming right up.
Okay, time to get started. Thank you for being here. We will stand for the Lord's Prayer and then Pledge of Allegiance. Lord's Prayer. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, forgive us of our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy name is King, power, and glory forever. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Commissioner Moser?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Jinks?
Here.
Commissioner Stuntz?
Here.
Okay, Lamar is, I talked to him Friday, and I think you found out today, he's still in the hospital. Let's remember Lamar. He's going through a rough time with tests and everything, so we need to remember him. Okay, you've reviewed the packet minutes of your packet. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any changes or discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vows likewise, motion does carry. The recorder now has the report for distributions for the month of December twenty twenty-three.
Okay, looking in the general fund, TCRS contribution, that's the employee and the employer portions of retirement, twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-three cents. Towards the bottom of that page, payment to Cigna, sixty thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. That also is employee and employer portions of the health insurance coverage for the month. Page two, twenty-two hundred dollars is paid to Del Hayes Land Surveying for multiple surveys in the downtown property that we're purchasing from the utility board, and the closing is tomorrow. Middle of that page, nine thousand seven hundred and five dollars to Martin Pools and Fence, that was for the fencing, the final payment on the fencing that went around the Main Street Marketplace. Fifteen thousand dollars to Mitchell Emmerton Hill, that's our annual audit, that's a portion of the payment on that. Six hundred and thirty-five thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, radios to Motorola. And thank goodness, we got a VCIF grant that pays a hundred percent for those radios instead of us having to come up with that funding. Further down, two thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars for station lawn care, I believe that was maintenance on the soccer field, it was paid out for that. A little bit underneath that, Safe Industries, we paid one hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. Again, this is a capital improvement item that we're not gonna have to have on the capital improvement plan anymore because John's department was able to get a FEMA fire grant for that, so we just paid a five percent match on that amount instead of having to fully fund that. Page three, general fund, Board of Education, we made our first appropriation to them from the budget this year, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And Sweetwater Utilities Board, another monthly payment, that's the stormwater amount, nine thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars. Further down, you'll see our fuel purchases for November that were paid in December, nine thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. That does include the school system, and they reimburse us for their portion of it. Page four, Sweetwater Utility Board, Sweetwater Utility Bill, including our traffic lights and high-mass lighting, twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Towards the bottom of page four, I just wanted you to see where we made a move from our general fund checking into the LGIP investment account, because we were earning a little more interest there, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And just below that, the library appropriation for the year, a hundred and forty-five thousand, we made that transaction between funds in December. In State Street Aid, we made a payment to Cannon and Cannon, that is our engineer on both the SDP project, which is resurfacing Hawkins and Limwood Road, and the multimodal project, which is adding a sidewalk down Highway eleven, ten thousand eight hundred dollars, and that, part of that was for each of those projects. Nothing significant in drug fund or tourism. The library report is in there, and you'll see the reflection of where we moved it out of the general fund into the library fund, the hundred and forty-five thousand dollar appropriation. Nothing significant in LEA. In solid waste, our garbage contract for the month was twenty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-four cents. And then there was no activity in the COVID fund in December. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Hear a motion to approve the report for December? Made in second, any questions? Any comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vows likewise, motion does carry. No one registered for any public comment period, so we are going, we're happy to have with us tonight a visitor, Coach Heather Jaramillo from SHS Sweetwater High School to talk about the Career Technical Education Program, and how the city can partner with SHS on this. Heather?
As he mentioned, can you hear me? Is that good? Okay. I may talk too loud. Like he said, I was a coach, so. My name is Heather Jaramillo, I'm here representing the CTE program, or the Career in Technical Education. For me personally, I'm over the work-based learning program, which is AKA co-op for what most of us remember it as, and the office management focus. I'm also part of the Junior Main Street Board, which we've had a lot of success with. So, right now, my main goal is to let you listen to some of the the opportunities our students have at SHS, and the programs that we offer with CTE. But also, it's to gain this partnership with the city, to continue this internship program with possibly a paid internship, or trying to offer our students in any way we can to help build them into the real world, and give them more experiences, so when they leave the high school, they've experienced things outside the classroom. So that's the goal. So some of the programs that we offer, and I'm just gonna list these, and if you have questions, I've had each program or each department head give me information on that, so if I didn't have it, I hopefully have it at my hands. So mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, which is HVAC, they just got this program this year, which is through a grant through Cleveland State, and we've just added this program. Structural systems are what we consider construction, horticulture and greenhouse management, animal and vet science, office management, nursing education, dietetics and nutrition and information coding systems. Amongst all of these groups, we offer fourteen industry certifications, and what that looks like for our students is they are tested in a different area, so that way, when they leave Sweetwater High School, they have actually had experience, whether that's OSHA ten, whether that's through residential heating and air conditioning, whether that is serve safe, there's all kinds of different ones. TSEC for veterinarian science, that they can earn college credit, so that is something where they are actually hands-on, or having to learn a specific skill to test to get this. It sets them apart when they leave the high school, so they're actually gaining some type of certification. We recently got, what's an, it's called an ISM grant. Only, I think, four systems across the state of Tennessee got this grant. So Monroe County, each school gets to use this money to better their facilities. In our school system, what that looks like is our horticulture program for greenhouses going to be renovating the greenhouse to offer more for our students. It's going to have an automated system where she can turn on and turn off, and I would say she, Ms. Hammond's, can turn off and turn on, whether it's cooling or heating, or water dispensing. All of these things that our students are gonna get to experience, we're adding to our barn to have a show barn for our agriculture students. In my classroom, we're adding a three-D dual extruder printer, what that means, it's a really fancy word for two colors. It can print two-colored three-D prints, and our students can design those three-D prints. So they could make something, and then print it to see how it comes out in the three-D print. Some of our other systems, there's a CNC plasma table, up until last week, I didn't know what that was. They can essentially cut through metal and make metal designs. Let's see, what else? We have anatomy table, which this one was a big deal. In our nursing education program, this table is where they can manipulate the human body, in all forms, whether it's muscles, whether it's bone structure, whether it's, they're looking at different organs, they get to actually physically manipulate and see what this looks like on a huge table. Now, what this looks like in the future is, the way we sustain this is through what we're hoping to do, an open-air market. Now logistics haven't all been figured out yet, but we are going to have this section when they build the greenhouse for all of these different groups to design, to build, to sell something. So our dietetics and nutrition, they're completely renovating the kitchen, so that way, they have an industry regulated, or where it looks like it's the actual kitchen of an industry. So they're completely getting that, so that way, our students can experience that in their classroom. So, some of the things that we're planning on hopefully selling, whether it's to our student population, whether that is to outsiders in the community, is in that, the CNC, the wood lathe, which is where they'll have for small wood projects, they're planning on selling these that our students make to our community members or students. So hopefully, well, that will continue to self-sustain the use of these with our students. Through the collaboration and partnerships of Junior Main Street Board, our students are doing unpaid internships with different businesses, and they're gaining that real-life experience of what it looks like for inventory, or point-of-sale system, or the back of the store, types of things where you don't see every day, and they're getting that real-life experience with marketing, and doing all the social media, or some of the social media, or parts of that with each business. And so my goal for the work-based learning part would be to continue growing our students and getting them to partner with the city in different, in different ways. I know at our spring advisory meeting, we met with Jessica and Haley, and at that meeting, we just kind of brainstormed and collaborated on ways that our students can partner with the city, and the, you're gonna have to say it, because I'm gonna, the sis quintessential?
Sis quintennial.
There we go, I knew she would get it. How our agriculture students are going to actually try to do either a sheep show, or something to get our students involved in that, in addition to whatever's always being done. So, I'm gonna leave you with this, and I'll be done, unless you have questions for me, which I hope you do, I have some information here. Principal Kim Vineyard would like to extend an invitation to our commissioners and staff here for you to come tour Sweetwater High School. We would, obviously, the date is to be announced, once we can collaborate on a day, but you could come tour, we'll have snacks, you can meet staff members, you can look at some of these, this equipment that we have, some of it we have, some of it still yet to be ordered through this grant. But we'd like for you to guys to come see what we have to offer at the high school for our students. Because I know a lot of times, when you've been out, even like whenever I was out, you just don't know what's there, or what's changed, and we've renovated things, and we're, the gym definitely doesn't look like it did whenever I was there. So things have gotten fixed or renovated, and we'd love to have you guys there. Any questions?
What is, you said partner. When you say partner, what does that mean, how we can partner with you? What are you wanting us, as a city council, to do?
So if there is any way to get our students involved, in any way, whether that's paid or unpaid, for them to come in, and maybe they're partnering with the city maintenance, or maybe they're partnering with here in the front office, where they're learning additional skills that we're teaching in the classroom, but they can come and physically watch or do.
So would that mean if, if John, our rec department, needed someone to mow?
So, we actually have students on our, that I have right now, that are in my work-based learning, who work for the school. So that, who do our lawn maintenance. I have a student, obviously, it's, he has two jobs, because he has one during the winter, when there's not a whole lot of mowing and weed eating, and school maintenance that needs to be done outside, but he also does all of the school maintenance now, or all of it, a lot of it. So that would definitely be something that we could do.
So that's in every department. What about if one of them wanted to ride with the police department, if they're interested in law enforcement?
So that would be something that would, that we could do unpaid internships for, I'm assuming? But we do have those opportunities for our students, and that's what I want to continue to grow. So if a student comes to me and says, hey, I would love to be an architect, what do I need to do? Like, I would love to be able to say, hey, we have a great partnership with Sam Moser, and here, you guys can go once a week, or twice a week, and you go shadow him, and, or maybe if there was a grant that was paid, that'd be great. But if it's not, I want them to gain some experience, or at the least say, ooh, this isn't what I expected, and now I need to change. Or, this is what I love, and I can't wait to continue this path in college.
Okay, good.
Any other questions?
As far as the Junior Main Street, obviously, seeing that many high school students participating, and kind of getting involved in the community, and seeing the change, and seeing the possibilities, and seeing the growth, has been very encouraging for me. And obviously, if there's something that we can tweak or add to in that, please, please let us, let us know.
That's one reason why I'm here, is to hopefully continue just building on top of that. Because, like he said, we had over eighty students who applied to be in the Junior Main Street Board. That was from freshmen to seniors, and I've watched kids blossom in ways that I didn't expect them to. I have kids, even now, when we do our High Point Ceremony, which is Friday, at nine-thirty, we change it from nine to nine-thirty, in the cafeteria, so I know that you guys, I hope are, have been invited, or have seen it, there we go. And at that, at that ceremony, we have students in our Junior Main Street Board who will be speaking, who, in the beginning of this year, had no major role. I'm not trying, you know, not trying to say anything, but they didn't have a major role until watching them transform over this school year.
Pretty cool.
Yeah, really cool. Any other questions?
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Does that start immediately, is that in effect as of right now, or is there, are you still working on it, partnering?
So, we could start as soon as you guys see a need, or see something that we can do to help you guys, so.
Jessica could get ahold of you to fulfill, okay?
Correct, yep. Sounds great, and I'll be in contact, because we'd love to have you guys come to the high school. So we'll get with this Vineyard and Jess, and we'll try to line up a date that works for everybody to come to the high school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no old business, so in new business, we received one bid for a vehicle for the street department. All three of them. Bid for three vehicles. Number one is a two thousand thirteen Chevy Silver Dorado, three fifty, four-wheel drive, rear wheels, hundred and forty-two thousand miles. Also has a gooseneck hitch. Have you looked over these, Joanna? Okay. Second is a two thousand thirteen Chevy Silver Dorado, three fifty, regular cab, four-wheel drive, rear-wheel drive, Duramax diesel, hundred and sixty-four thousand miles. Number three is a two thousand fifteen GMC Sahara, thirty-five hundred, regular cab, four-wheel drive, dual rear wheels, hundred and sixty-five thousand miles. Eighty percent good tires, et cetera. One and two combined price is fifty thousand dollars. One, two, and three, all three trucks combined price is eighty thousand dollars. Which do you prefer on this?
We would like to take the two for fifty.
The what?
The two for fifty.
Two for fifty?
The two for fifty. David has looked at these vehicles a number of times, they also have gone to a mechanic and got a clean bill of health for both of them, and so we would like to purchase them for fifty thousand dollars.
There is funding in the equipment budget for the, for the purchases.
So you're making that into a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
What's gonna be the, what's gonna be the use of the vehicles?
Yeah, I was.
Use of the vehicles, David?
They're replacing the Ford Rangers we've got. I mean, we're gonna, you know, they're more useful vehicles as far as work, they got flat, you know, they're flatbeds, four-wheel drive diesels. And we're gonna turn one into a dump bed, you know, there's lots of times we can use an extra one ton dump, one ton dump. And I can use the other one when the guys run jobs to haul materials back and forth, get them in flatbeds. I mean, they're a lot more useful than a Ford Ranger.
Yeah, will you be selling the old ones?
Yes.
Are they about shot?
They're shot, yes.
They are shot. Okay. Okay, do I hear a second?
I would have, I would have some more questions on the age of the vehicles, and the mileage of the vehicles, and, you know, if they're, if it would be worth, I mean, because I'm sure there's no warranty or anything on these. I mean, I personally wouldn't consider buying a vehicle with a hundred and something thousand miles on it. I don't know, I just, are we? Is this something that a little more research could be done on, and maybe?
Well, I think David, David probably has done all the research needs to be done on them. Have you checked them out, and looked at them, and driven them, and?
Yeah, I've looked at all the maintenance records, he has records, he has all the maintenance records. I mean, what we were thinking is buying used vehicles to save money, to keep from having to spend, you know, that those trucks, brand new, as bad as they got on them, were seventy and eighty thousand dollars each, you know, brand new, and I know, I know they're used, but.
I just think along the lines of at the same time, something goes wrong with that engine, and you're looking at anywhere from twelve to seventeen grand. You know, and that, I mean, with no warranty, that could happen the day after they're bought. I'm not trying to knock anything down, I'm just concerned with, you know, is there, is there another option that we can look at, maybe, and even if it costs a little more upfront, it might cost a lot less on the rear end of it?
We're basically trying to save money. I mean, you know, they're, they're good vehicles, I grew both of them.
I think, I can't say this for sure, the mayor's asking how much we have budgeted for this, I'm pretty sure there was a hundred and fifty thousand originally budgeted for three vehicles.
Yes, and we've spent thirty-four at Ford Plaza, at one bit.
So we're about at the limit now, for this year?
I mean, I, my, my question was, we've never, we've never purchased anything like this with that kind of years on it.
I can tell you just what I know. My brother Jacob also looked at these vehicles. We, we drive these vehicles at Jinks, so we have a lot of experience with these kind of vehicles, and the fact that they're diesels. Their lasting power and their resale value is just so much more than what you would get from a Ford, or even a gas vehicle. So I know, even from that, Jinks would buy them, and so, I'm not sure if that really weighs in a whole lot, but our brother has also looked at these, and says that this is a very solid value for the trucks that he has. If we don't purchase them, they'll be gone very quickly. Because like David said, to buy a new one, you're looking at a huge chunk of change. And we are making a change, I will put that out there, we are making a change. Normally, we don't buy really work vehicles for the street department, at least that's my understanding of the history, but we also want our street department to kind of go and expand, and be more hands-on, start subbing out less things, and if we start subbing out less things, we need to have bigger trucks, and better trucks, and more, more of a work truck than a Ford one-fifty, and so these trucks are a good place to start.
When you, when you say we're, we're subbing out less?
So we would like to sub out less of our striping, of our, even the sidewalks that we're doing, and things like that. We would just, we feel that the streets department has the skills to be able to do a lot of that work, and so we are hoping to save money in that way by doing more of the work ourselves.
Does that, does that overload on other things, if you're taking on more, more work?
Not if we do it smart.
Okay, Commissioner Jinks has got a motion on the floor, I'm asking again, do I hear a second? Motion failed due to lack of a second, so we'll get back together and see what else we can work up. It's the first time I ever seen a motion from a setting commissioner, a request was not seconded.
I, I, I think that it's not necessarily that we don't want to get the equipment, because we need it, we need to get something, but I think we need to do a little more research on this, and see if buying a newer piece of equipment with warranty.
She's got to tell you that.
Well, I'm just telling you, if I could speak, if we could see if it has warranty with.
The budget is almost exhausted.
I understand that. But to me, there should be other options, instead of buying an eleven-year-old truck that could possibly cost us the rest of that budget before the years up there.
I mean, that, and, and once again, this board works very well together, and I, I have a similar sentiment. I just, that is the first time in twelve, twelve years that we've purchased something of, of that age. And that, that's the only thing that's concerning. Now, with, with additional research, maybe, maybe yes, but, I mean, that's, that's what we're sitting here for, is to ask the questions and look a little deeper.
Okay, as we heard in January, the city is applying for a CDBG grant for the community center. We need to pass a resolution, is there a motion to approve? Need a motion to approve. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion's in discussion. All right.
Before we vote, I'm gonna recuse myself, because I'm working, working on a project for the city.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vows likewise, motion does carry. Sweetwater Utility Board needs a resolution to approve contract for SWIG, S-W-I-G, the SWIG program. This is for the TDEC grant on their water project, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Commissioner Moser and Jessica has been working with MTS to do a comprehensive update on our employment handbook. Betty, Betsy Cunningham is here, from Human Resources Consultant at MTS, to review the major changes and answer any questions that we may have. I assume you are Betsy. Got caught in traffic, didn't you?
I did, it was a terrible accident on our seventy-fourth.
Okay, come right on up to the podium, Betsy.
Thank you.
We plan to discuss this again in our February workshop, and if ready, to have a final vote in March. So, Betsy, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you for allowing me to be here, and an opportunity to work with Jessica, and then I met with Sam as well. I have to say, first of all, and you all know this, but Jessica is amazing. She, I've been with MTS four years, and I've not had an She, um, I've been with M-TAS four years and I've not had an opportunity to work with her that often. And it's because she knows her stuff. And so she only calls, uh, when she has the challenging questions and, uh, her professionalism, her commitment to your employees, it is just, uh, it's really refreshing to see that. And I've appreciated and enjoyed working with her. Um, I'm not sure, uh, I just wanted to touch on a couple of highlights unless Jessica, you or Sam or Mayor have a, other ideas. I don't know if you wanna go through page by page. Uh, no, thank you. You're like, no, save us that. Well, let me share with you just overall, uh, a couple of the changes we made or recommending and in particular, some of the new policies. And, uh, I'm sure I see your city attorney here as well will be, uh, reviewing these. You'll definitely go over these page by page. I know that. But, um, a couple of high-level changes, uh, off the bat, there were some reference to probationary employees. And, uh, we have gotten away from that over the years because, uh, when you make reference to like the first six months of their employment, it's a probationary period. That's an implication that at the end of that six months, they are a permanent employee, if you will. And what we're getting at is we know, we want them to stay, we choose to, and they will continue, but we are employment at will. And your city recognizes employment at will, which means you can be let go with or without cause, with or without reason. We don't recommend that and I don't find that many people do that. But we wanted to take that out of your handbook. So we took out any language that referenced probationary period. Again, you can still make a decision to keep them or let them go at any time. So that was one of, one of the kinda high-level changes we made. Um, the other, a couple of other new policies that I'm, I'll reference is the ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act. When you have fifteen or more employees, you're required to have, uh, an ADA policy. And basically it means if an applicant for employment or any of your current employees have an issue where, um, maybe they can't return to work for whatever reason, then you have to go through what's called the interactive process. And all that is, is fancy terms to basically say they need to sit down with, in this case, we would recommend the department head, uh, and your recorder, respective commissioner, if, if necessary, and, uh, look at what they can and can't do based on what the physician, uh, what the physician says. And so we have a policy on that here and you'll see that. I think I've highlighted in yellow or, or green for whatever reason, um, the new policy recommendation. So that's just legal ease to make sure that we're compliant. And, uh, and important because oftentimes department heads, if you get an individual who's hurt and, uh, they say, I can come back to work, but I can't lift more than ten pounds. Well, we don't want a department head to say, well, I'm sorry, if you're not full duty, I can't use you at all. We have to go through the interactive process. So we have to have the mindset of, well, let's talk with our recorder and let's see what the process is we need to follow. You still may make the decision that that, you can't accommodate that, so you don't have to, but you have to go through a process of having the conversation and getting the information from the physician. And I have all the standard, uh, forms and things when, when Jessica gets to that point, if, uh, if need be. Um, Non-Smoker Protection Act, that was a simple one, but basically that says, uh, and you had, let me say this, in your personnel policies, um, you had a lot of things. I mean, it wasn't that bad, even though it's not been updated recently. And again, because I'm sure Jessica's kept her eye on it, said, hey, we've gotta do some of these things right away. But, um, Non-Smoker Protection Act just means that you can't smoke in city vehicles and that also includes vaping. And so we have that written in here. The Code of Conduct, that was new, um, and that's new to many of the customers. I have the, uh, opportunity to work with East Tennessee. That's my territory. I live in Mayville, so I'm a Blount Countyan. And, um, but one thing that we've recommended to many of our customers is the Code of Conduct. I learned from meeting with Jessica and then talking with Sam that one thing that's very important to your community and I could see it just driving in. You've got Valentine lights out. I mean, it's so cool, just driving in the community. But, um, you want to make sure that everyone that works for the city is always attentive to the needs of people in your community and conducts themselves in a professional manner at all times. So in the Code of Conduct, we d- address some of those specific things. Anti-retaliation policy, that's a new policy. And basically that means if you have an individual, um, you know, we want to go through our chain of command anytime and any organization. But if you have an individual who observes behavior that they see that maybe their supervisor or someone is participating in, that is wrong, that they can come forth to this body and share that. And there will be no retaliation when they bring that. I'm not talking about just basic complaints, but if there's something inherently wrong or egregious that someone is doing, then they're not gonna be retaliated against. Leave of absence, that was one that, um, we made a recommendation, we at M-TAS and, and then talking with Jessica and Sam about this. Currently, your leave of absence policy has someone coming to the full board if they need an extended leave of absence. And that is not what is recommended as far as a best practice. There are a lot of things that, you know, we are a, a public entity, so everything is open, right? Open records, open information. But when it comes to someone's need to take a leave, particularly if it's a medically related situation, we feel like that needs to be handled as quietly as possible. So the recommendation that we have laid out here is that would come forth to, um, HR, who is named as your recorder, I think in your, in your codes, but, um, it will come to the recorder and, uh, like the Personnel Commissioner. It would involve people who have a need to know, but not come to the entire council to make a request for a leave. And then another new change that we are recommending is on your drug and alcohol policy, on your testing for employees. Um, we worked with, uh, public entity partners, our council did, our legal team for quite a while, because we've been recommending for years that you participate in the Tennessee Drug Free Workplace Act. Well, and we recommend that because you get a five percent reduction on your workers' comp premiums if you go that route. What we learned or what our council said, legal said, that when it's a public employee, we do not have the right to drug test all employees. That's a violation of their rights by doing that. So, Public Entity Partner and M-TAS came together and we developed this beautiful eighteen-page policy on drug and alcohol testing. And here's what we say, here's what we recommend that all of our customers do. And it's not a significant change, I don't think, for your city, but on pre-employment, we would only drug test uh, safety-sensitive positions. So really, and we define in here, safety-sensitive, uh, as obviously our CDL operators, someone in a public, um, safety in regards to police and fire. It really is only excluding your administrative staff. So on pre-employment, if we're gonna hire a, um, a new front office person, there's not a need to do a drug test on that person. Random testing, our recommendation is the same, only safety-sensitive if you do random. Uh, you may not do random, you're not required to, you can choose to. However, with DOT, we know if you have CDL drivers, they are required to have random drug testing. And then on post-accident or reasonable sus- suspicion, everybody's free to go. We would test anyone on reasonable suspicion or post-accident or, uh, incident. And I think Jessica can convey, on post-accident incident, you've been doing that already. And then on reasonable suspicion, uh, we will want to make sure that you do, and I can help do that, um, probably a refresher, annual training where, uh, your supervisors in particular are trained on how to, um, recognize or, um, refer someone for reasonable suspicion testing. So, uh, we, we would recommend we do that, uh, each year. So that was a big, um, a, a change in policy overall. What questions do you have thus far about anything I've mentioned? Or in, in general?
I think just to speak to what B- Betsy and Jessica and I, I looked at is, is keeping, keeping the things that keep the city sa- safe, but adjusting the ones that kinda left us a little bit open and, and trying to clo- close the gaps on, on liability and then adding like the ADA, the new components that bring us up, up to speed. And I, and I think it was, it was a very good meeting, very comprehensive, and we did go kinda page by page and, and, and looked at it, but please, guys, take, take the time to, to read through, um, and any and all suggestions that you may see that applies, you know, to, to your department, please, please let us, let us know for sure.
Yeah, please. And a couple, uh, I failed to mention, uh, towards the back on sixty-four, T- Tennessee Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. That was recent rip legislation. Uh, if you have more than fifteen employees and it basically means, uh, if someone's pregnant, you can't discriminate them, against them, and you need to accommodate that. Well, we know that, right? That's pretty common sense. However, now it is a law that we're required to do that. Along those lines, there's what's called a Pump for Nursing Mothers Act. And it is break time allowed for mothers to express milk if they choose to nurse. We also are required in the event, if you have more than fifty employees, which you do here, um, to, um, make a room or an area available for them to go to express their breast milk in that event that, that's an oper- something they need to do during work hours. So you may not have that place right now, but that's something to be mindful of. If you hire an individual and who has a child and chooses to go that route, then we would need to make some kind of accommodation for that. Um, please, you know that what I shared with both, um, Jessica and Sam as we met, um, I applaud you, number one, for taking a look at this. I've got some cities that I've worked with who it's been twenty-something years. I mean, they don't even have a typed copy anywhere of it. And it's okay, you know, like you don't know what you don't know. But I encourage you to look at it annually. But the main thing we have to do with our personnel policies is, we want whatever is black and white to be the same thing that we do day in and day out. Because that's what'll get us in trouble. And I'm sure your city ha- attorney has shared that with you. So if we say we're doing these things, then we need to do things. So please, um, read over all the information. If you have a specific question, feel free, um, you can, uh, reach out to me directly, reach out to Jessica, has my info. Uh, I'm on the M-TAS website and I am your HR consultant for any HR-related, uh, things that you might need, so.
Thank you, Betsy.
Oh, man, you all are, you are easy. I like this. Come back here.
So what are we gonna do, uh, I guess when we pass this, John, you're gonna get together the new, uh, handbook, what we're gonna add in there and then we're gonna vote on it.
Before we go voting, we're gonna have the entire thing.
Go over it.
Finished.
Yes.
Finished product. And we'll go over that.
Which the draft that was attached to your all's email is the final draft right this second. So assuming you all don't have anything else after tonight that you wanna change, and if you do, Betsy's graciously offered to come back again to our February workshop if we have more questions or anything, but there is a draft in your email right now and we will be replacing the handbook in its entirety. Instead of piecemealing it together, we're just gonna say, this is the new handbook and it'll be adopted as one whole.
That's what you're asking, Mayor. So what we would suggest is a repeal and replace. So you would say, you would, um, the resolution would read, you repeal the contents of your prior personnel policies or handbook and replace it with the new one. And then probably a separate resolution on the drug and alcohol, just because it is new. And if you ever wanna make changes with that, aside from your personnel policies, it would be separate. So, uh, and we will also, um, Armenta Love Day's worked in our office for forty years and she is a jewel, but she will, when Jessica gives me the green light and says, hey, we're good to go, we will create a nice table of contents for you. She will ver- I say we, she will. She will verify it all looks good, the format's in place and, uh, handle all that for you. And so we will be able to give you that finished product.
So our, our hopes is to review the month of February. Any questions, comments, or concerns we talk about in the workshop and then put it on for a resolution first of March. Is that? Is that acceptable? Possible, doable?
Thank you, Betsy.
Yes, and thank you all for the service you provide your community as public service.
Thanks, Betsy.
Thank you, Betsy.
Usually we'll make you stay, but you leave if you want.
Well, I need to read the agenda. I'll see how long you take, babe.
So that's coming up on the agenda and we'll look forward to that. Commissioner Richardson, you have few names for part-time and volunteer firemen, I believe?
I do, and I'll just put all these, uh, in fact, these three in the same motion in the form of a motion. That we hire Parker Fields, Tyler Bryson, and Scott Brazier as part-time firefighters.
What's the definition of a part-time firefighter so that we fully understand what that is?
A part-time firefighter, and that's, they're, they'll be on the payroll and anytime they cover shifts and things, they will be paid accordingly. We do have volunteers that come in. I don't know, are they, are, are volunteers are not on a rate? Are they just our part-timers?
Yeah, just part-time.
Does part-timers have efficient training? They know how to drive the truck?
They don't go on part-time, part-time unless they have their training.
Okay.
Or at least the, the basic training, then we move it forward. They have to have bases, yes.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose likewise, motion carries. The state has passed new legislation in twenty twenty-two to allow a higher bid limit for cities. But we have to pass an ordinance to amend the purchasing policy to increase the bid limit to twenty-five thousand dollars. John has prepared a draft on this. Would, uh, you explain, Jessica, what this actually means?
So our current bid policy is, was in line with the state until the state made this change in twenty twenty-two. Anything over ten thousand dollars, we had to advertise, take sealed bids. It took a month, you know, to get the bid in, open it and vote on it in a public board meeting. If we pass this ordinance, it will allow us to do everything up to twenty-five thousand without doing public sealed bids. Um, it's been a while since the state amended this amount. Um, obviously things are a lot more expensive now than they were when it was at ten thousand. Um, it'll just let us be a little more efficient, but it also takes away the control from the full board for purchases between ten thousand and twenty-five thousand. Before you all were still voting on that, now, as long as it's budgeted, that would not have to come before the full board or be in a full sealed bid. A department head and a commissioner could just choose to spend up to twenty-five thousand without taking sealed bids. So that's what this would change if it's passed.
Okay. Ordinance number ten thirty-four to amend the purchasing policy to increase the bid limit to twenty-five thousand dollars. Give John the opportunity to do this, requires a roll call vote. Do I hear a motion that we put this twenty-five thousand dollar bid in motion?
Make a motion approval for ordinance number ten thirty-four as submitted.
There a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made in second. Any more discussion on this?
I think.
Everybody clear on it?
Mo- most of the school systems and other governmental entities that I've worked with have already kinda set that, that threshold. This really is nothing new. It's just, that's, that's the new threshold.
Didn't we raise this a few years ago to, from ten thousand?
We amended our purchasing policy, and by, by the way, I forgot to mention that. If the item is over ten thousand, we are still supposed to get three competitive quotes. We, we can just print offline. The internet has made that a little easier. We don't have to call around to everybody. You can call, you can get a verbal quote, you can get them to fax you something, you can print it off the internet. But you are still supposed to have three competitive quotes between ten thousand and twenty-five thousand, but you don't have to have sealed bids for twenty-five thousand.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Mr. Moser?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Mr. Jinx?
Aye.
Mr. Stutz?
Aye.
Okay, motion does carry. We have our annual library report. Anya Rich, the library director, is here to give the annual report. Get right up in that microphone, young lady.
All right, thank you.
Is it on? Is it on?
Can they hear me? Can you hear me? Then I think we're good. Okay. Um, this is gonna be a recap for January to December twenty-twenty-three. Um, so in front of you, you have some of the paperwork. I'm gonna go ahead and read over the annual report. Uh, we coordinated with the city hall for installation of security cameras and repair of HVAC units, one and three. We coordinated with Parks and Recs Department uh to provide repair of leaky faucets, slow drainage sink, replacement of blowing light bulbs, batteries for exit signs, broken doorknob. They did the basement alcove. They removed the carpeting there, and they painted it. Uh, removal of store mat, damaged magnolia tree branches, repainting the parking lot lines, and measurement of a broken window that needs to be replaced. Um, as the director, I have attended ten of the ten of the city commissioner meetings, four city commissioner workshops, five county commissioner meetings, two county commissioners' town hall meetings, six county commissioner budget meetings, three Monroe County Library Board meetings, six Friends of the Library meetings, three Main Street meetings, four city one-hundred-and-fifth celebration meetings, not even gonna go there on that pronunciation, one MACA Connect twenty-twenty-three meeting, and one Board of Education meeting. So a lot of meetings is tends to be my job. Uh, with the Coe River Regional Library Support and the state and federal book grant, we brought in um, we had seven thousand and eighty-four dollars. We purchased three hundred and sixty-six books and eight audiobooks. With the Coe River Regional Library Support and the technology grant, uh, this time we only did three hundred and seventy-five dollars with a local match of three seventy-five, and only purchased two iPads and one backup hard drive. The iPads are being used for the ABC Mouse computers for the kids. We completed the E-Rate Form four ninety-eight for internet discount of five hundred and seventy-three. The library received two thousand six hundred and fifty in private donations. Of that, only six hundred was unrestricted. We completed Title VI surveys, standard survey, and public library survey, better known as data collection. I, as the library director, completed the third week of training in Nashville, the State Library and Archives as the final part of the Public Library Management Institute, PLMI, and graduated from that last March and became a certified public library manager. Visited the Nashville Public Library, the Jean and Alexander Heard Libraries at Vanderbilt University, Oak Ridge Public Library, Humboldt Public Library, New Bern City Library, MacIver's Grant Public Library, which is in Dyersburg, Obion County Public Library, Jefferson City Public Library, and Art Circle Public Library at Crossville, King Family Library at Sevierville, and Meigs Decatur Public Library. Bulk of this was through training. We had training in those locations. Director and our staff have, we have all completed um training for our s- library standards, and there was eighty-three hours of that that was completed. Mira Patel attended eight Main Street meetings, two ribbon cuttings, and one T-DOT meeting, planning meeting. We completed the inventory of the materials in the library collection. We provided library brochures, bookmarks, Bookbrag tags to five hundred plus at the Back to School Supply Night at Madisonville Primary School. Library information sessions and storytimes held for seventy-eight at Boys and Girls Club, two hundred and sixty-five at Cross Creek Christian School, and delivery of library materials to Sweetwater Boys and Girls Club, Wood Lodge, and Wood Home. Provided a booth and summer reading program kickoff at the city's Blooms, Bluegrass, and Barbecue. We held five summer reading program events at Inglewood Park in last June with three hundred and eighty-nine attending. We hosted daily summer school camp kids for a total of five hundred student visits and sixty-nine teacher visits during that same June time period. We've been short-staffed every month due to illnesses, COVID, training, vacations, and we also had to custodians resign on us. Our current custodian has been there for almost six months. So we're hoping and praying that one stays with us for a while. Uh, library volunteers included high school service learning, Tennessee Promise, Cleveland State Service Learning, Friends of the Library, homeschoolers, Boy Scouts, and community members. This, all this work pays off with this little infographic right here, and this is the January to December twenty-twenty-three. We had thirty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-one library visits, six hundred and forty-three new patron cards, one thousand six hundred and forty-five computer users, seven thousand one hundred and eighty-three free Wi-Fi users. They can even tap in, even if they're in the parking lot, they don't even have to come into the building. We had twenty-two thousand three hundred and forty checkouts of library materials, and we had nine thousand five hundred and sixty-five of digital checkouts. You can do eBooks, e-magazines, and audiobooks. Three hundred and thirty-five programs, workshops, and classes offered. We had attendance of six thousand one hundred and thirty-five. We had seven hundred and seventy-three volunteer hours given to the library. We very much appreciate this. Uh, interlibrary loan, we had four hundred and forty-three items that we borrowed from other libraries into ours for our patrons, and we loaned out two hundred and ninety-six others. The far corner here, I just wanted to draw this to your attention. We saved our community two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for materials that they checked out at the library as opposed to purchasing. So this is the value to our community, and we've done this with six part-time employees. To get a comparison, we gave you last year's. So this has been a huge uptick in things. So for our library visitors, last year, we only had thirty-two thousand nine hundred. So they moved around, but some of their, some of the graphics are the same. But you can sit there and start comparing. There's been a huge uptick in everything. Um, the usage of our public computers has gone down, but they have more than made up for in the free Wi-Fi. We went from two thousand five hundred and eighty-six in twenty-twenty-two to nine thousand five hundred, whoop, wrong one, seven thousand one hundred and eighty-three pre-Wi-Fi users. So they are utilizing the library a great deal. Uh, I had meant to bring along, I don't know if you're aware that at the library, we do have three hotspots that can be checked out for people to use at home, internet access. Another thing that we have been doing a lot of is the video games, and I had meant to bring along some of the surveys that we're running right now for for why people are utilizing that service. But I do know we've had a lot of parents that are very appreciative of that because the kids can try the game and find out if they like it, or maybe they did like it, and then the parents go buy it. But it's saving the family money is what's really going on. We brought you the newest brochure as well, and I wanted to draw this one to your to your attention. This Thursday, one to four, if you know of anybody that has not gotten their high school diploma, have them come to the library on Thursdays between one and four. We teamed up with the Team Tennessee Adult Education, and they're providing basic education, they providing the high set preparation, which used to be referred to as GED, English as a second language, and they're also doing college and career advice. They'll be doing this on the Thursdays between one and four. Please help get the word out, because if we don't utilize this service, Cleveland State Community College is a partnership in that, and the others, they will determine that there's not a need. It'll go back to, they'll only be able to use the one in Madisonville. But right now, we have it at the library, Thursdays, one to four. Any questions?
Thank you, Tony. You do a great job. I do know that.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate everything you do.
It's very interesting to see the the numbers compared to to last year, so thank you for doing that.
We go, phew, no wonder we're tired. But it it has been a huge uptick in a lot of people using the library. There really has been, which is good.
Thank you for all you do.
Okay, we will now move into the discussion of the capital improvement plan.
Okay, so we'll start with the quarterly financial report.
I'll skip that. Let's do the financial report.
Okay, um, yay, there we go. Okay. These are some of the overview numbers. Um, we have received about forty-eight percent of our anticipated revenue through December thirty-first. And we've spent around fifty-eight percent of our total revenue. That is a little higher than normal. Some of that's big projects. We always pay our insurance upfront, and some of those bigger ticket items, work comp and liability and building insurance, so that's part of that. Um, I'm not really concerned about it right this second. Um, general fund revenue highlights, there are a couple things I want to point out on this. We're at um local option sales tax. We've brought in forty-two percent of our budget. Keep in mind, local option sales tax lags sixty days behind. So you're thinking we're halfway through the year at December thirty-first. The fiscal year should be at fifty percent. This only includes amounts for five months. So it's about a month off because sales tax lags behind. So fifty percent's not the standard for the revenue because it just comes in slower. Also, your property taxes really come in in February. We have a million dollars in property taxes to collect in the next three weeks. So that's the vast majority of our property taxes are coming in in the next three weeks. Um, I do want to point out the local option sales tax. In October, when I did my quarterly financial report, we were nine percent above what last year's revenue at the same time was. Now we're less than two percent above what last year's revenue was at the same time. So to me, that tells me it's, sales taxes slowed down a little bit. Although, as of December thirty-first, the deposit that we got in January was, it might have been our all-time highest. Second all-time highest. So what people purchased from the stores in November that the merchants reported to the state in December that got deposited to the city in January went way back up again. So I do think this might adjust in the next quarter, but I guess what I'm telling you is I have a feeling sales tax is slowing down. So every year, we've been putting an extra four hundred thousand dollars that got spent in sales tax into our budget. I don't really think that's gonna happen come June this year. So, you know, that's, our local economy is starting to slow down a little bit. Um. These are our other funds. They're in pretty good shape. State Street Aid obviously had some major projects right off the bat, early in the year. Um, the other ones are pretty much in line with where they should be this time of year. This is so small. I don't even know why I put this graphic in there. That is, I mean, it's totally useless, isn't it? Um, this is actually our debt schedule. It's the same exact debt schedule I went over in October. Very tiny debt. Um, it's also the last page of your budget. There's also a copy on that table over there. If anybody wants a printed copy, you can have it. I'm not gonna focus a ton on debt because we went through it in the last quarterly report, and I haven't I haven't updated it or changed anything since then. These are the same grants that we also went over in the last report. Um, the only change to grants right this second is we did find out that we did not receive the T-DOT signalization grant. This is the grant we've applied for two times in a row in partnership with Sweetwater Utility Board. The only traffic signal in town that we have that is not on a camera or some type of better system than just being on a two-minute timer is the one at the post office. So we keep applying for that signalization grant. It's really a problem whenever uh traffic on the interstate is bypassed onto Highway eleven, and it'll back up for a long time. We need to get that signalized at some point. T-DOT's rejected us twice. I'm gonna throw the same application in again with help from East Tennessee Development District um, when it comes back around next year this time. At some point, if we never get that grant, we may wanna look at ponying up the cost ourself. If the utility board did the work, and we bought the materials, and we worked that out, you're talking about about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, something like that, to upgrade that light, a hundred and fifty thousand. We did have a citizen walk in today and ask for a traffic light to be placed at High Street and Monroe Street, citing specifically at school times how crazy busy that intersection is. There is a flashing yellow caution light there now. Just so everyone knows, to add a new traffic light to town that's not currently existing, the estimate's around five hundred thousand dollars. So to put one four-way stop traffic signal is five hundred thousand dollars. Um, um, we are still waiting to hear about the ECD Broadband Connected Community Facility Grant. We applied for two million dollars, um, or up to two million dollars. We were supposed to hear about that in January. I think they've pushed that deadline back to March, so hopefully we'll hear something on that in the next little bit. This is grant funding by category since two thousand eight. I've not updated that since October, so it's the same numbers that you saw in October. But obviously, sidewalks and trails, some water and sewer money, COVID relief money, and playgrounds and parks have been the the highest grant amounts that we've had in the last ten to fifteen years. I wanted to give you an update about our wellness program in January twenty-twenty-four. Sonia Crush, would you stand up, please? Sonia, by coming in, by, she placed in every category because some categories, there were only a few people that registered. So Sonia was smart enough. She is our overall highest winner in the wellness program. Um, but I wanna point this out because we've had more employees participate in the wellness program this time than any other time, which we did fund more categories. They got cash prizes if they won it. They could do it as both teams and as individuals. Um, but this is kind of an overview. We had seventeen city employees participate in the month of January. Some of those contests go into February, and then it stops again, and it'll start over again next January and February. So it's something we could expand year-round, but it's a lot to keep up with. So we just kind of tried to do a push at the beginning of the year. Everybody get healthy, and maybe some of those habits will stick. The teams walked over a million steps. Um, our employees put in over five hundred miles in the month of January. There were eighty-five weightlifting workouts completed and seventy o- seventy cardio workouts completed. We lost a grand total of over fifty-five pounds in the month of January between the people that um participated. Our individual winners, Will Vineyard, won first place in weightlifting workouts and cardio workouts. Uh, Landon Purdy won first place in the weight loss contest because he's twenty. And that's what happens when you're twenty. You can lose weight like that. No, no, no offense to Landon. You did a great job, Landon. Uh, Kurt Cannon also won two uh individual competition steps and miles. In our team winner winners, City Hall won first place in the weight loss contest. Uh, that was me, Haley, Julie, and Sonia. The street department team, David Moses, and then three of our newest employees, Colin, JT, and Brandon, won for most weightlifting workouts throughout the month. And then Sweetwater Police Department had a winning team. Kurt, Jaren, Marty, and Adam won first place for most cardio workouts. And they won for steps and miles, I think, also. So, as a team. So we had good participation in it this year. For to have seventeen employees out of like, you know, seventy-five or eighty employees, that's that's quite a bit. So I'm happy with the wellness program. Um, and they got their payouts today. Actually, they settled today, so. Hopefully, some of them will continue the contests that go into February, and I just wanted y'all to kind of see the numbers from that.
What all Sonia did.
Sonia got second place in like four different categories. Steps, miles, uh, cardio sessions. I think you got second place in cardio sessions. A lot of them only registered as a team and not as individuals, so Sonia, she did great.
And she kept the score on everybody, right?
No, I pretty much kept score. Me and Julie kept score on everyone, so, yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, so, good job, everybody that participated, and hopefully it continues to expand.
Is that gonna continue on uh, on their own as a voluntary thing? Or are there any incentives to continue on the program?
Not until next January again. So some of them still have contests in February that they can, like, um, they can still do most cardio workouts, most um weightlifting workouts. Those continue into January. We also have a tobacco cessation, so if they quit uh using tobacco products for three months, they'll get a payout at the end of three months. So um, we'll have some people that keep doing that. And then we'll do it again in next January. Um, these are our capital projects discussion. We did this discussion back in November, I think. So I pulled a few of those out of there. These these numbers that are currently committed are the same numbers that we talked about in October. The only thing I've added is the one new application for the broadband connected facility. If we get that, we would have matching funds on that. It's only a ten percent match, I think, on that grant. So I really hope we get that grant because it would go a long way with only a ten percent match. Um, here's two things we are adding to this discussion. We've talked before about doing a paving plan because we do have roads all over town that we know are gonna need to be repaved. Unfortunately, we don't have the funding to be able to do them all at once. So Tim Adams and David Moses have worked really hard to put this ten-year paving plan proposal together. So we're gonna go through, and then the other thing we're gonna talk about in capital plan is community center. But this is the ten-year proposal for the paving plan. So we have, and I have it printed out here if anybody would like to see a better copy there. Um, this kind of breaks down the kind of funding we would need per year. You can see it kind of slacks off the last three years. It's not that we cannot. These are the ones that that Tim literally drove the road, and David drove the road, and they measured, and we made estimates, and we said, these are the ones that we think are in the worst shape. We also kind of wanted to get an idea about what we would apply for as our next SDP project. SDP is Surface Transportation Project. It's funded by the state of Tennessee. We pay a twenty percent match on it. They hold the funds, but they also have to approve which roads can be approved for it, and they will not do, for example, Hurry Young subdivision's on here for twenty-six, twenty-seven to be repaved. SDP funding's never gonna let us do Hurry Young subdivision because it's a closed-loop road. It doesn't connect two different roads. So they want it to be at least a minor collector as a classification that T-DOT has for it. Um, so one of the few roads that would qualify for that funding is Chestnut Street. Because Chestnut, if we combined it with another street, would technically connect twenty, Highway three twenty-two to Oakland Road. So we'd have to, once before we use Chestnut, we use SDP funding to do Chestnut Street and Anderson. So there are sections of Chestnut, and it needs help. We might have to do it through Fair Street or another connecting road to be able to actually use SDP funding for that. But that's one that we've slotted for the next round of SDP funding. The bad thing about SDP funding is it's in T-DOT's control, and it might take five years for them to actually release us to go bid it. So it needs to be a project that's going to need to be paved but isn't urgent. Because if it's urgent, you don't involve the state in it. You just do it yourself. So this is kind of a breakdown. Hopefully, we can use this in our budget planning to kind of decide what streets are getting done and when. And it's helpful to City Hall to have this because when people call and complain about their road or ask when, if it's on here, we can say, hey, we actually do have that in our paving plan for such and such year. And then they can complain about how that's not soon enough. But so, um, at least we have some kind of- for such and such year. And then they can complain about how that's not soon enough. But, um, at least we have some kind of plan in place. So any, any roads that you all are aware of that need to be added or worked on, um, please do so. And again, here's the plan. If anybody would like to see it printed, um, and we do have some estimates on it and Tim taught me how to calculate it. So now, as long as I've got length by width, I can figure out what the cost will be with an estimate on asphalt, so.
Does that correlate in with our survey?
It does. Thank you for asking that, Jim. That was very important. We paid for that, uh, survey to be done and we have live video of that survey that we can look at. Um, several of the roads that are on here, when we drove them, we did not maybe identify, but because they were listed on that plan, we went ahead and added them. Um, Oak Hill is one of those roads. Um, Hurry Young is one of those roads. It's actually just the top loop of Hurry Young because we've done the bottom loop in the last few years, but the top loop, um, is in pretty bad shape. So, and those can be identified by looking at that graph and seeing the ones that have red spots. The worst one on that is Hawkins and Linwood, which is the one that we're waiting on TDOT. We've been through the right-of-way phase. I got the certification on that last month, so hopefully they will say we can go to bid with that one soon, in the next sixty days, I hope. But, um, that one's the worst one on the list and it just so happens to be the one that's supposed to be paved this spring. So hopefully that will work out.
Do we know what sort of use? And I'm just asking because I made the mistake of trying to drive a car the other day. The upper end of Broad Street? It's pretty much a goat path at this point. And it may be a situation where there's really no reason to try to improve it. I don't know how much use it gets.
That's a good question. And I haven't actually looked at the upper end of Broad Street on that map either, so I don't know how bad it shows on there.
So I might look.
Okay, so, upper end of Broad Street.
From where the big wide street with the nice curbs and all stops.
And goes down to that, yeah. Which, a huge part of that, most of the time, is because we, we paved everything we had right-of-way for. So you don't have a sidewalk in certain places because we don't have the right-of-way for it. Or you don't have curbing because we only had a ten-foot path of right-of-way, so we didn't acquire any right-of-way. So a lot of times that's the.
Why this is like idiots. As I'm saying, I don't know what kinda use it gets that far. It's not in good shape.
Yeah. And this is on the, uh, community center. So Jim had asked about, do we have any preliminary estimates on what it's actually gonna take to maintain the community center? We're closing on it tomorrow. We do have an immediate need of door locks because the utility board, when they had the building locked, it was, um, internet-based and the internet's been turned off. So we need to handle that fairly quickly. I'm getting estimates from a door company on that to just secure the building and I'll come back with that information in the next meeting. Um, after that, once we are up and fully operational, there'll be additional costs that I can't really include in that yet. But what I have included is, by my estimate, we would have to have a full-time employee and two part-time employees to manage the community center. The scheduling, the cleaning, the closing up after people leave. And it may be more than that, but by that estimate, I've plugged in numbers for what that would cost. I also called our insurance carrier and found out estimates on property insurance. The liability exposure is very negligible. Like, I mean, it wasn't even enough that they calculated a rate for me, but it'll be about eighty-four hundred a year to add it to our property insurance coverage, which will happen now. As soon as we acquire it tomorrow, we'll be adding it to insurance. Um, utilities, what the utility board had been playing, paying was somewhere around seven thousand dollars a year. We're projecting that to be higher because we hope the usage will be more than what it was for the utility board, so I bumped that up to ten thousand. Maintenance, janitorial supplies, operating supplies, repairs and maintenance. Um, technology, um, having internet monthly charges in there, some equipment and software in there. So we're looking at a minimal annual cost to add the community center of a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Um, that's something we need to think about as we're budgeting coming up. And, and that's not gonna cover everything. That is basically one employee, two part-time, or one full-time and two part-time employees, the benefits and cost of wages for those things, and then the insurance utilities and a very minor amount for maintenance and technology. So, I wanted you all to have as much data as you could as you're getting ready to work on the budget.
Is that, at that closing, are we still taking a quick claim deed?
It's a special, special warranty deed. Uh, for those who aren't familiar, a, a quick claim deed, just here's, anything, any interest we have, we're conveying to you. I'm very comfortable that nobody has any interest in it except the utility board, so it would be okay. A warranty deed is just like having a warranty on your refrigerator, only this is a warranty of title in which Sweetwater Utility Board would be guaranteeing that there, nobody else has any interest on it, that there's no encumbrance, uh, against it. A special warranty deed is a special warranty deed because it's really not a warranty deed. Except to the limited extent that Sweetwater Utility Board is warranting or guaranteeing that nobody else has acquired any other interest in this property while Sweetwater Utility Board has been the owner and holder of the title. And in this instance, we're talking about so many years. And I'm comfortable with the fact that nobody has acquired any interest in that time. And it's such a long period of time that if anybody claimed that they had, it would have expired. There are several, and I don't recall exactly how many, easements against the part of the property that was the A Street property, is the A Street property. Because that property was generally described in earlier deeds as going up to May Street, going across, across the creek where the, where sixty-eight is, where Old Sixty-eight was relocated. And also the Duck Park. It, it included a lot of that property. So there's, there's railroad easements, there's utility easements, there's those sorts of easements that the city, the utility board between us actually controls and the railroad, controls all of those. And most of them aren't even on the part of the, aren't on the property that we are acquiring. But they would show up in the history of the deeds because it's been lopped off for other owners, it's been lopped off for the, the street and that sort of thing. So to answer the question is, is, we're not taking a quick claim deed in which the utility board would not guarantee anything, but we're not getting a warranty deed in which they would guarantee everything with the type, regard to title. I believe, it's my legal opinion, that in this case, the special warranty deed is virtually the same as a full warranty deed.
And one reason I ask, I know sometimes grants will require you to be able to show you have, particularly for a physical location like that, for us to have, for instance, a grant to complete this community center. You know, it could require us to show good and sufficient legal title. You're satisfied we could do that?
I'm satisfied we can do that. All right.
What about the buildings across the street? Do they require any immediate attention, security-wise or anything?
They all are locked by padlock and, uh, regular like old-fashioned door locks, so. I do think at some point we need to have a conversation about whose responsibility this, these buildings are gonna be while they're vacant and while we're still working on them. So are we gonna have someone check them once a week? Are we gonna, you know, there's probably, there needs to be a conversation about that for sure.
Which put down the workshop, uh, for the workshop, these items. First, we're gonna proceed as tomorrow, this will be ours. All the property will be ours. We signed a check. It goes to Eric tomorrow, utility board. And, uh, so put that on the workshop. We'll, we'll talk about that. Is that okay with everybody? How we're gonna proceed, what we'll proceed with, that kinda thing.
You're talking about capital plan now? Capital plan? Okay, capital improvement plan. The department heads have had a copy of this for about a week. Your copy's in your packet. Um, luckily, we were able to remove some stuff over the fire department. Um, we added a pumper several years out. We added an aerial ladder truck several years out, but we were able to remove the air pack since they received grant funding for that. Same thing for the radios that had been on here. We were able to remove quite a bit of that because of the VCIF grant that we received. Um, police department, they still need to do an expansion in the police department to fix the bathrooms. Is it the second and third floor, Eddie? We've gotten several estimates on that and it's quite a project. We were gonna be ADA compliant on those. It's gonna be a pretty good expense. So that's been added to the capital improvement plan. Parks and Recreation, um, we have the upcoming LPRF grant. That's the biggest thing on it. Um, with pool improvements. And then for a couple of years out, the next project would be the football field bleachers. That's kinda been on the list of things. And we've had engineers look at it and make sure they're gonna make it a few more years and probably by the time this cycles around again, we're gonna need to repair those football bleachers. So that'll be the next major thing for them. The street department, oh, Joanna and David. Um, in addition to the paving plan, we have a couple of grants that we've already committed to. The SDP project on Hawkins and Linwood that we've already talked about, the multimodal sidewalk on Main Street, the TAP grant going north on Main Street. The TAP grant is in a real standstill right now because TDOT has not assigned anyone to actually work on this grant with us. Technically, we have a year left on the contract. So I called them last week and I said, y'all are either gonna have to give us an extension on the contract because I can't even get them to approve the consultant ad. That's how, and that's been six months I've been trying to get them to approve a consultant ad. So, um, they're either gonna have to give us an extension or take back that grant and we just won't do it or something because there's, there's no movement on it at all. Um, we've, I've put a hundred thousand in there for paving every year. That's not com- a completely ridiculous amount, but if you look at that first column in the streets, there's no way that we're gonna have one and a half million dollars to spend on street projects next year. So it's in here because those are, that's the wish list and that's what everyone can think of that we might need. But that's not what funds are available for it either. So there will definitely have to be, which we can adopt it in the capital improvement plan and not put it in the actual budget. And, and most often, there are things that are in the capital improvement plan that don't make it into the actual budget. In some ways, the capital improvement plan is a wish list because I'm gonna turn it into East Tennessee Development District and they're gonna keep an eye out for grant funding that lines up with anything inside that capital improvement plan. So even if we're saying, we're not gonna do this until we have the funding for it, we still wanna include it on there. But obviously, there's definitely gonna have to be some shuffling around the street department things, just because you can't do all of that in one year without more funding for it. Um, planning and development, there's not a ton of, um, new things in there. We kept the assessment level high. We also did get a Main Street grant for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which I included in the planning and development and tourism budget at the bottom of that first page. In the second page, um, I actually took out fund balance growth. You all may wanna add that back in. Um, I feel like our fund balance is quite a bit higher than what the auditor recommends. I also wanna hedge that by saying we could spend it all in a year if we wanted to. So we can't go crazy with it, but I also feel like I don't know that that should be a priority right this second, just trying to grow that amount. Although, we are making great interest off that money right now. Um, I did add the TMI property in that listing because we've talked about it multiple times. Whether that means it's acquired at a tax sale, or we partner with a developer in it, or there is an amount that's put in, in that capital improvement plan for y'all to look at.
If I could just, while we're on that topic, is that moving forward in with a tax sale?
Yeah, uh, forwarded a draft, we're going, planning on right now of doing a separate sale for just TMI. And I forwarded a draft of the complaint to do that to Tyler to see if the county's wanting to join in uh, or not. It'll just make it a whole lot easier if they do. But even if they don't and we sell it just as a city tax sale, then the beginning price or bid that'll open it will be for all of the city and the county taxes during that time. So, um, it's, it's been, it's been three weeks or so since I sent it to him and I've not heard anything. And I'm thinking in the next week or two that I'm gonna redraft it and take the county out and just go ahead and file it.
One other thing in that general government section is the community center. Um, Sam and I had the conversation. I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. We approved Sam as the architect for the project. Sam is preparing a proposal, a contract for us for all of the drawings. And he'll bring that back to us and then the board will vote on that actual contract with Main Street Studios. And at that point, we'll be committing ourselves to the first payments on the community center. And that's for the design. That's for the full-out design and drawings and everything. Um.
My, my question is, we are wanting to send this out to bid this, this year. As far as finished construction documents and.
And this matters because you're gonna get construction estimates and that's what we're gonna base our things on. And if we don't end up bidding it out until two years from now, it's gonna be a different amount.
Well, I mean, the, the thing, the thing about it is, as we, we've talked, there is a possibility to design it so it could be done in phases. I mean, bare bones would be, we fix the structure just, just like that, just like it is with a few interior build, build-outs. And then we do offices, entry, you know, and meeting rooms in the front. And then there's additional meeting rooms, you know, in the back. So there are potentially three-phase approach to this, this one project. A lot of times what we will do is you'll design the whole, uh, facility and then do add or deduct alternates. So, you know, we'd love to do the whole thing, but maybe we can only do phase one. But we know what phase one costs at that time. We know what two and three cost at that time. Um, that would be, like I say, my recommendation, so it gives us options.
Is everyone good with telling him to go ahead and draft and base his contract on the entire design for all the phases? Is that what we want him to proceed with?
I think that would be a little.
And at some point, we're gonna have to have a conversation about how to find this. We don't wanna drain our entire fund balance for this project. And I don't wanna borrow at eight point two-five percent. I do think they're gonna get cut. I thought they were gonna get cut last month and they didn't. Rates didn't drop, so I, I think, I think the financing will become more attractive a year from now than it is right now, but we'll have to have that discussion at some point, dude.
I know this may be an ouch once I say it, but USDA rule development. I mean, their interest rates are, you gotta do a whole lot of paperwork on the front end, but their rates and their time is.
They'll let us finance for forty years, um, so you know, your monthly payments can be less. Um, I, I would recommend that we check rates with both the TML Bond Fund, who always gives us the best rate, and USDA. Um, USDA is harder to work with. They, they take, they take the long, the timeframe is longer. It's because they have three staff members and they're all doing fifty projects all across the state. So they are harder to work with. TML Bond Fund has one lady that's focused on us and doing our project, so. But if it makes a difference rate-wise, I think we should check both of them and see what they come back with. We are rated by both S and P and Moody's now. Last time we borrowed, we were only rated by Moody's, so it really should, you know, I don't know it'll make a difference in rate, but it should make us more attractive on the bond market, so maybe that TML can give us an even better rate than what they normally can. Last time, they beat USDA's rate by quite a bit. The benefit with USDA is sometimes they will give you a grant, which is loan forgiveness. So they'll say, okay, you're borrowing three million dollars, but we're gonna give you a grant for a hundred and fifty thousand. So they take that right off your principal and you only have to finance the balance after that. So sometimes that will make up enough that it's worth it to go with them instead of going through TML. But we'll definitely check both of those places.
Will you have that ready for the workshop?
I don't really wanna do it yet because the interest rates are still too high. Like, I feel like this is a conversation we have when they drop a little bit more. Cause we can afford to pay Sam's bill out of fund balance, but we can't afford to construct it out of fund balance. So I say we go ahead with that portion of it and then we'll have the conversation about financing when the interest rates are a little more attractive. Cause we're gonna have to have the drawing no matter what.
But after November, interest rates will come down anyway.
It might.
I mean, but as far as, as design, engineering, and letting out to bid, we, we could definitely be ready by fall for, for that, uh, bid letting.
The only other thing that was added on this plan, just before we get too further down, is I added, uh, cameras at the animal shelter. That's been a request a couple of years in a row. People will cut the fence to get animals out or drop animals off. Or it's been kind of an issue and we think if we had some security cameras there, it might help a little bit. So that is one new item that was put in there. We put it in for next year. That may be something we have to put off another year, but you all. But you all come, plan to come back to the February workshop with suggestions on what to move around or what the priority is or if there's something in there that the department heads and I missed that you think needs to be in there. And we'll talk about it again in February. We technically don't have to pass this until the meeting. We technically could pass it the same meeting we passed the full-on budget in. But this is a helpful tool in helping me figure out where to put things in the budget. So, um, if we could pass it in March or April, that would be great.
Going on below that, the I-75 infrastructure line, what is that for?
Hmm, we began putting that in a couple of years ago. And we've tried to include it in the actual operating budget every year in case something comes up. But it has not actually been spent. Um, one year out of the last three, we spent it because they needed additional infrastructure and we paid for, uh, engineering to have a blue line assessed. It was something we did through the state. We paid fifteen thousand dollars for the engineering firm to do the drawing to where if somebody came and landed on that land, they would have a plan ready to turn in to the state. It's already been approved by the state that says it's still access-ready. So, that's the only time we've actually spent that money in the last couple of years. It's kind of been a placeholder in case something comes up. One thing is, the utility board's already committed to extending gas to our, uh, I-75 Commerce Park property that is currently privately owned, but we have helped run water and, uh, sewer out to that property. Um, if a person, if a bird in hand comes and says, okay, I'm ready to locate here, the utility board's ready to locate gas, we're going to need some more funding for that, not just us. So, it's, it's almost a placeholder. It's not something that absolutely has to go in the budget because it's not designated for a particular thing, but.
And the access road?
I mean, I don't know. We can take that off if y'all want to. Before we had it, uh, uh, this has been on the capital plan for years. Um, before, it was going to run an access road from the two interstate exits, probably on the eastern side of the road, which is now occupied by Red Stag. So, I don't even know if it's necessary anymore. At one point, we had a discussion, well, can it be on the western side of the road through like Murray's Chapel area, down through there? And maybe it can be. I don't know. It may not need to be on the capital improvement plan anymore. Maybe that's not a priority anymore, but.
I don't see where we'd need it.
There's probably been enough development now that I don't know. I will point out the ADA Duck Park Homecoming Bridge. We're going to have to do something about that. Our engineer's estimate on repairing and replacing that homecoming bridge is a million dollars. I only got an estimate for it because it was free and because we had a grant that we were going to apply for on it. We did not get the grant because it was, it was for bridges. We did not get the grant. John Campbell says, we're just going to take those existing piers and pour some concrete over top of it and make it a bridge. I'm very nervous about bridges.
You're talking about the bridge, not the duck.
Yeah.
A million dollars?
That's what the engineer's estimating. Because here's the thing, it can't, it is arched so much that it is not ADA compliant. It can never be considered a trailhead. It can never be considered anything that we could actually use. It would have to be a flat bridge to cross it. Those are, as the state reminds us all the time, state waters. So, we have to get permits to cross them. So, it's not just, oh, it costs a million dollars in materials to build a bridge. There's a lot of permitting involved. There's piers that go down in the ground. There's engineering, there's hydraulic engineering. I'm sure there's a million other things to it, but, yeah, that's the estimate, so.
Have we been advised, or is the city going to have any cost over TDOT building the new bridge out at sixty-two?
They have never asked for a contract or a financial commitment from us.
Okay. Because they're going to start that pretty soon.
That's what they say.
Yeah, that's what they say.
Okay. Anything else? Don't forget the dedication High Point Cemetery Friday, nine o'clock. Try to be there if you can. High Point is, used to be a black school up in Tickle Town. And they integrated into Sweetwater High School in nineteen and sixty-four, I believe it was. So, this is kind of a dedication ceremony to them. Cleo Davis, special guest. Who's that?
Well, who knows Cleo?
She was a teacher.
She was a teacher at High Point for years and is still living. Does she know that you won the city's wellness contest? Should I, should I show up Friday and let her know?
Johnny Davis is why I've always brought sausage to Johnny. All right. Anything else? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you for being here.